So my name is David Ledger and I'm president of Shasta Environmental Alliance. And we want to welcome you to our city council forum, which is co-sponsored by local chapters of the Sierra Club, California Native Plant Society, the Shasta Birding Society, which is formerly Windy Lot von, Trails and Bike Ways Council, North State Climate Action, and Friends of Jenny Creek. And all of these groups are nonprofits, so they will not be endorsing any candidates, but as individuals, they may or may not choose to. All candidates were invited. However, Aaron Resner and Mr. Spangler was unable to make it. Mr. Johnson kind of came last minute on us, so we have a handwritten sign for him. But we're happy to have him here to participate, so we can hear everyone's views. Let's see now. So I'm gonna let our moderator introduce all of the candidates up here. But I want to mention, I guess I'll just say their names here. David Bakas is here, and right there. And then we've got Mr. Donka, Danaka, Danuka. I'm really bad with that. He just told me what it was. Ian Hill, Mike Latau, and Mark Mazano. And then we have Johnson, Johnson right next to me. So all of those accepted our invitation, and we really appreciate it that they're here to give us their views. So there's three seats open, so this will, you know, half of these candidates are gonna get our votes, I guess. So with that said, I want to introduce our board member, Sarah Richard, who is also gonna be our moderator. And so with that said, I'll let Sarah take over. Thank you.
This funny position of microphone. Hi, everyone. It's so great to see such a packed house tonight. So here's what you can expect from our forum. In just a moment, I will have each candidate introduce themselves. They'll have two minutes to do so. Then I'll ask eight questions, rotating the order of who answers first. And tonight's questions were developed by the forum sponsors, or inspired by their mission. So there's a clear environmental theme here. And then once we go through our moderated questions, we'll actually take questions from the audience. And so if you'd like to ask a question, we have little sheets of paper located in the back table. So you can write down your question, and we have two other C board members who are gonna bring those up to us. So try to get your questions done by 6:45, so they can sort them and make sure we have a diversity of questions from the audience. And so, and then after our audience Q and A, we will have each candidate do a one-minute closing statement, and with the goal to get you all out of here around 7:30. So with that, let's meet our candidates. So candidates, please tell us who you are and why you are running for city council. So let's start with Johnson.
Hello, everybody. This is the hot mic. Hot mic. Here we go. Hey, everybody. Thank you so much for coming out tonight and being concerned, but I was gonna hold it. Hey, guys, hold the bottom. But I'm currently city on city council as an appointed member. Love to earn the vote of the people this November. I, my background, a little bit, what I have been doing the last, you know, ten-plus years is small development and building in town. I've sat on planning commission, been a part of a number of different projects in the community, one of which was down in Lake Reading. We put in the sand volleyball courts down there with a small group of people, and really, really proud of that project. Worked alongside the city, and did that public-private partnership so well. And it's been such a great addition to the youth that have been able to use it. And we're excited about adding a few more courts here soon. But really, my viewpoint on development, kind of, you can see through my projects. I did an infill development project called Shiloh Park, which has modern farmhouse look with a front porch design community. I was inspired by the Midwest design and how they connected neighbors through front porches. So we wanted to design that, and we did that. I live in that neighborhood. We had the opportunity to clear-cut that subdivision before starting, and we decided not to. We wanted to keep the native trees and the native land as much as possible. And that was part of the design of neighborhoods. So I really love to be on city council, to serve, to kind of look at projects through a lens that's unique and creative, that could, thank you so much. So, you know, I want to bring that view. We haven't had a builder, someone that has that viewpoint, or economic development background on council in quite some time, and I'd like to do that. Thank you so much.
Yellow sign is 30 seconds, and the red sign is, please wrap up.
I'm joking about holding on to the bottom of this thing. It'll fall out if I just let go. So for those of you that I have not met yet, hi, I'm Dave Bakas. And I have lived in Reading for quite some time, about 15 years or so. And when my wife and I moved here, honestly, one of the reasons why we settled on this location is because of the natural beauty that we have in this area. We just needed to take a couple walks on the River Trail to realize, you know, the absolute gem that we have here in Reading. I am dedicated to preserving that gem and making sure that everyone gets that same experience, making sure that they see the natural beauty, not just the growth that can occur inside of a city. You know, I bought my first home here, opened my first business here, all those things. My roots run really deep here in Reading. I, at some point, decided that working wasn't enough for me, so I found a greater purpose in starting to volunteer with clubs and organizations in our community. And formed a, it's a co-alice club, anyone that doesn't know that, that's a children's youth service organization. And so we dedicate that club's purpose towards ending food insecurity for our young kids. Currently, between that and another club that I ran, we are serving over 300 kids every single week with food for over the weekend, so that they don't go hungry. That was because we had teachers that were reporting that kids were stealing each other's lunches. And we just have to do, we have to see what's needed in our community and address it. And so since I began that volunteer work, I've actually served thousands of volunteer hours between different organizations, not just in those two clubs that I mentioned. And a matter of fact, even our furry or four-legged friends, I do work with Haven Humane Society as well, mainly through their adopt a pet programs. I serve in a leadership capacity with our local MLS, which I'm a real estate broker. And I serve as the chairman for the rules committee, making new rules for our organization to make sure that we maintain the highest professional standards. And I sit on the housing board for NBCSS, helping those in the worst of cases to better themselves. And we'll talk a little more about that through the questions, I'm sure.
Good evening, friends. I'm Paul Danuka. I'm a medical doctor here. Married to a cancer doctor, actually the only one in town now. And I'm a father of two beautiful girls who are also going to be doctors, and one son who is already a teacher. That's a good music. It seems like, I go to the local church, it seems like half the people there come from my church, so I'm an advantage for building this church and fellows. I have been on Board of Regents and a big supporter of Turtle Bay Museum, Sherlock Planetary. I've been working with the Shasta beloved community, Shasta Equal Justice Coalition, United Way, Northern California for a long time. Now my kids have grown up. I want to make sure that we return some of the blessings that we have received for our community. I moved here from New York 20 years ago, and major draw to come here was the beauty of the nature, the trees, the water, the waterfall, the mountains, the river, but also the beauty of the people who are very kind and generous. What I want to do is, I have a few priorities that I want to highlight. One is mental health and drug rehab, treatment facilities, shortage of doctors and nurses and healthcare workers to alleviate that, hopefully bringing a medical school here, and also reducing the cost of housing. In addition to that, I want to make sure that our city retains its nature, retains its, it's a beautiful part of California. I want this city to be known as the city of the trees and the river. That's what we want to focus on. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ian Hill. So I currently work as a GIS mapping specialist in the Cessar's office, and have been a public servant for over six years at both county and city levels. I'm also a union steward, fighting for my fellow workers, even so far as helping lead the largest labor action the North State had seen in some time. I will focus on community and resilience, if you're willing to chill with it. Climate, specifically fire and water preparedness, housing, establish a robust continuum of housing accessible to all residents, and stability provides. Infrastructure, sustaining the future of physical and technological improvements like roads and fiber. Learning, university policies and training programs. Labor, protecting the rights and dignity of all workers in creating work for jobs. I'm here, or I would very much like to protect the greenery that Reading has. I used to work parks and rec, specifically in the parks, and also with the sports leagues out there in those parks, when I lived in Santa Cruz for a few years. And so I know what it's like to preserve these green spaces, but also have them be accessible to residents and utilized by them to enjoy them. And then also maintain them into the future for other people to use. So I know Reading has problems, and I believe the point of the council is to acknowledge them and elevate guns and brains to bear their relevant people and resources. Thank you.
That pounding earlier was my heart. I was grateful to be a doctor here. I'm Mike Latau. I've been here for 30 years. Moved here in 1995. Came here to Simpson University, graduated in 1999, 2000 era, spent some time in the Army after that. Came back, I met my wife, and we've lived here the entire time. So I've been here for over 30 years. We have four children together. My children have been growing up. I've got one who's a senior in college now, one who's a freshman in college, and two in high school. My time here in Reading, I've served on the U-Prep School Board for over 10 years. And that's just been a great experience, as far as just being able to serve and be involved in leadership, been involved in the California Soccer Park, been involved in leadership opportunities with Simpson University on my boards and stuff like that. But I remember moving to Reading at a time before we had roundabouts, before we had In-N-Out Burger, before we had heat waves. You know, when I moved into Simpson, I think it was 102 degrees, we thought that was hot back then. But I think we've hit some records this year, 118 or something like that. But it's just getting hotter in Reading. But yes, with Reading, I had had a business here for 25 years, Insurance and Financial Services Office. We represent over 10% of Reading. We have a pretty large customer base. But why am I running for Reading City Council? Over the years, I've had a lot of customers, friends, family. They said, Mike, you've always had good ideas. You have good solutions to problems, you know, and you'd be a good voice for Reading. And I think what I love the best is just getting involved in difficult problems. I mean, I feel like I'm involved in crisis almost every single day in insurance, and we have to come up with creative solutions and find ways to solve problems. And that's what I love to do. But I think how we solve problems is by listening. And what Reading needs is a, is a new voice, you know. And that's what people tell me every single day. We just don't feel listened to. We just want to be heard. You know, it doesn't mean we're always gonna agree or disagree on all issues, but, you know, leading to listen is really, really important. And leading to also have empathy for tough situations is really, really important. And I think that's gonna be the new voice we're gonna have in Reading over the next four years, is just really doing a good job of listening to people. And that's how I commit to lead you.
Thank you, Mike. Well, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm sorry that the other candidates couldn't make it. In my personal opinion, I think it's disrespectful to the people that put these things on. This is a great crowd. This is the most I've seen. I think this is, what, our fifth, fifth forum where we get to meet the people? Well, I met a couple hundred of them yesterday, because Mr. Bakas and I walked to the Panorama Neighborhood and handed out 200 of our little bags here with our information. If I knock on your door and you answer it, we chat it. Because I don't, I can't make these decisions. I need to know what's important to you. I retired from Highway Patrol in 2011. And by 2019, I figured out that I just didn't like what our city was doing. And in 2020, I thought, you know, these special interest groups, they're controlling the city. So I decided to run, and I ran, and I won, getting over 18,000 votes. So I've been on the council for four years now. And we've had many challenges, and we've been very successful on many fronts. I'm really proud of the fact that while on the council, we now have the largest police force in the history of the Reading police. And our crime stats are going down. This is just the other day from the chief, where we have aggravated assault, that's rape inside of me, things like that, down 22%. Robbery's down 12%. Burglary down 65%. And larceny down 17%, and vehicle theft is down 46%. That's huge in this town, folks, huge, with the police department that we had. We were at 122. There's a couple that are off right now on injury, pending retirement, and we have to make some decisions about backfilling those positions. But my public safety experience has done a lot for this city, for the simple reason that we now have three firefighters in every truck. Why is that important? Well, when your house is on fire and you're inside, and the truck gets there with two firefighters, they can't come in. They just can't. They, oh, she won't allow it. Now we have three in every truck. They get there, they start taking care of business, and they're saving lives. And that's important to me. Well, that's what you told me. In 2020, you said, do something about public safety, do something about the homeless, and we did it. We just funded a $775,000 grant to build a navigation center next to the Mission. We have pallet shelters behind Rava, where we've got a 10-month program, and it's working. People are going through the program in less than 10 months, and getting into supportive housing. And I know many of you here, and one of my mentors is in the audience, Gary Cat. He's an expert. Your side is, I got the other side, not the red side. I'm sorry. I got the red side now.
I thought it was dual-sided, so now we know. Awesome. Thank you all. So now for our first question. Can you describe one way that climate change is impacting Reading residents, and how you would approach addressing that issue? And we'll start on the other end of the table with Ms. Mazano.
Well...
Oh, one minute each, please.
I'm sorry?
One minute each.
One minute. Well, I can tell you how it's affecting us. It was 100 degrees out there yesterday. It's fall. And we're not getting there. It is affecting us. We, you know, one of the things that we're doing in the city is we're putting bicycle lanes everywhere we can. People look at me like I'm crazy, but that's how you get the funding. The governor wants, and look, Sacramento's office is broken, in my opinion, but he wants us to put bike lanes in. Well, who the hell's gonna ride a bicycle in 117 degrees out there? They're not. I haven't seen anybody riding a bicycle on the Chelly. But we have a nice new road. And how about plaster? Did it come down plaster yet? All right, we got that done. Went from two lanes to one lane because that accident picture over there was out of control. I don't know that has anything to do with climate change, except for the fact that people are hot, they drive faster. It's been my experience on the Highway Patrol. It's hot. They got their windows down, they're trying to cool things off. Where am I at in my time? 20 seconds. And so then the other thing you look at, for me, I look at Shasta Lake. And where is it? Is it up? I used to keep a boat out there. And after COVID, I was in the hospital. I went down to the boat, I couldn't get back up. And that's gotta be climate change. It's still, it's melting the polar ice caps, and it's making life difficult. We have to give it some serious thought.
It's, it's hot. It's really hot. I remember how it was cooler in Reading in 1995, when I came here. Global warming was a topic in high school. They taught, you know, before my time coming into Reading, and that was such a new subject, you know. Back then, you really thought, is this really fake? Is it, is it real? Could it really happen? But everything I remember now is, we all have to do our part. Every little thing that we can do really does impact us collectively entirely. But Reading temperatures have gone up, what, two degrees over the last 40 years? That's been our average. It's steadily going up. The forecasts show that in the next 50 to 100 years, Reading's average temperature can be even six degrees warmer. You know, that's a concern. I mean, I'm trying to do my part. I've got electric vehicles, I've got Rivian, we have a Tesla, we have a plug-in hybrid. We try to do our part in lots of things. You know, we try to consider anything and everything we can do, because any little part I can do, we should all be really doing collectively, right? Because it is getting warmer, it's a reality. It's not a myth, it's something that we were taught 40, 40 years ago. And it's, so everybody should just do their part. And that's something that we just all have to pay attention to, because it's just gonna get hotter. Reading's not gonna be a very cool city, you know, ever again. We're not gonna get the ice age as Reading, but it's just gonna get warmer, you know. And we're gonna do our part to minimize that.
So, yeah, first off, yes, climate change is real. So in the past couple centuries, I have a biology, or sorry, a geology background, and something I learned was the past couple centuries for California were the wettest in the past few thousand years. So unfortunately, we've built a lot of our infrastructure and sort of expectations of these fountable times. So not only are we probably returning to a more normal arid situation, but also it's being exacerbated by climate change. So long-term, we need to start building for that, the infrastructure, housing, capacity, all those things. But in the short term, establish like permanent cooling centers during the summer, because right now, we don't have a permanent solution for that. And people are kind of caught in the lurch, and they don't know where to go, especially our unhoused population. So, yeah.
So what do we do in Reading to help that? And as Ian said, it affects the most vulnerable in the worst possible way. Unfortunately enough, but many people do not have the housing, they do not have the air conditioning that it gets 118, they do not have the supply for clean water. That's where City of Reading can make a difference. The other thing which we can really, really do and should do is have more trees. Frankly, for the life of me, I don't understand why our parking lots don't have more trees. If you have the trees, you have the shit. My car won't get to 140 degrees. Now, there's something to do with the tree ordinance, and I need to really, you know, get help of some of you people who have been looking into this much more than I do, that how do we develop a proper preordiness to really increase the tree canopy in this town? That will take care of, I don't know, of course, we are not gonna make, let's be tactical, we're not gonna change the whole globe with that, but we can change the environment and the quality of life and air in our town.
So solve global warming in one minute. Obviously, we're seeing the effects of global warming here. It's not a question. We're seeing rising temperatures. As a matter of fact, just over one degree we've seen since 1979 in this area on average. In addition to that, we're seeing decreasing rain, as was pointed out. So we're seeing, I actually pulled the statistic here, something like, we went from mean average in 1979 of 59.2 inches to only 43.5 currently. And we're starting to see real effects of that. We need to start working on our watersheds. That's a, people talk about retaining water and all these things, and they talk about, oh, let's reduce our use. Yes, that's a portion of it. But we also need to restore our watersheds to the point where they're actually able to retain the water naturally. A straight line, there's a reason why a river doesn't do that. We need to restore those watersheds, make sure that they're able to retain the water, and we can be able to have more access to it over time. Part of that is increasing the amount of trees, vegetation, and all of those other things. And I have one minute, and that's all I can talk about.
Well, since everyone talked about the heat, I'll talk about, really, climate change involves both extremes. We actually experienced that here. We're a harsh Mediterranean climate, which is a lot like parts of northern Israel. And we're very similar in what things we can grow here, which means we have very cold and very hot. And we experienced three snow events last 2023, I believe. And, and that's a lot for, for one season when we don't get a lot of snow. So you're starting to see these extremes. But one of the things I think is really important for a city council member is the posture. City council helps elevate the priority of things, and the posture of the council is usually the posture that our directors take. And some of the things that we're doing in our, in our city is our paralysis sludge dryer is converting solid waste into energy, and taking compost and turning that into energy. We're one of two in the state of California, besides San Diego, and in North America, one of the leading-edge cities that are actually using this type of technology. This is just one example. A solar, a community solar farm is another one that we're actually looking into doing, which will lower the rates overall and help us meet our climate goals.
Thank you. I know it's, it's quick. All right. So for this question, we'll give you 90 seconds. What is your stance on adopting a new tree ordinance, one specifically, one that requires developers to pay mitigation fees for the removal of native oak trees, and also requires that the city uses the fees collected to plant and maintain trees elsewhere? And we'll start with Bakas, and then we'll back around.
So now we can talk about where I was before I was in Reading. So I grew up in Butte County, Chico. And so everyone knows Chico's tree ordinance was a really controversial thing when that was put out decades ago. And, you know, developers complained, oh, it's taken us down, we're not gonna be able to build houses. Well, I can tell you, they built plenty of houses. It didn't kill development. They were able to do what they needed to do. I support the tree ordinance. I believe that that's important. And I believe that, you know, if they aren't going to plant the trees to offset, then they should do something else to contribute in this. So fees would be appropriate in that manner. That being said, trees grow at different rates. And one thing about a tree ordinance is you can't have one that's so strict that just says all trees that are over a certain size. We need to be looking at the growth rate of trees. So like a sycamore versus an oak, for instance. A sycamore grows at twice the rate that an oak does. So if we make a six-inch ordinance and says, hey, we have to have all trees that are six inches have to be replaced under this level, it actually is better addressed by saying, you know, variety, you know, obviously you can't go to each single species. But you can have general ranges, or let's say oaks, a standard, well, shouldn't say standard. A live oak, for instance, you need to be looking at a six-inch ordinance for a live oak. They grow at such a small rate that, that's basically a 20-year tree by the time that they're talking about cutting it down. Versus a sycamore at the same size, we're talking about a nine, 10-year tree. So I believe the tree ordinances are good things. They need to be done very well, and they need to be well thought out. And I think that I've got the plans to be able to help do that.
So, and I was just mentioning Creed earlier, so this is, this is great. I have always been attracted to the nature. It gives me solace, gives me peace, and clears my head. You know, since I was a young boy, I grew up in a city, but I was running to the mountains and Himalayas just to be amongst the nature. And the house we bought here, we made sure that we had enough keys for that. Now, having said that, what I need is an input from different people, including the Environmental Alliance, including the developers. What I'm very good at is seeing the different sides of an issue, from different perspectives, and bringing the people together. So rather than saying that I'm an expert on this issue, what I promise you I will do is, I will listen to every side and make sure that I bring them together, so that we can find a good solution from every side. And the reason I can do that is because I've done that. I've led the teams of tens and twenties and hundreds of people coming from different perspectives, and I can make them see the different sides. I cannot convince everyone, but I can reason with them. And that's what I will do for the tree ordinance as well.
Yes, I support the ordinance. Sorry. Yes, I support the ordinance. We can't keep having a plan subsidize the cost of everything.
Learned a lot about trees over the years, but it's not just a removal of one tree that requires a replacement of just one more tree. When you take out an oak tree, those roots, I'm told, can go out 30, 40, 50 feet. And when you remove that one oak tree, it can impact all the other trees around it too. And the oak trees are our native trees. You know, it's, we've had the Costco project that came and removed a lot of oak trees out there. You know, the thought process can be saved some of those oak trees in other areas, and I don't think it was that successful. We didn't even save the oak trees along the I-5 freeway over there. But I say, keep fighting for those oak trees, you know. For me, we have to listen to every project, and you have the pros and cons. And for me, I'm just gonna keep listening, because I just love to be educated. There's a lot of people that know more things than me. And one thing I'm good about is just learning and listening. And I do find the value in protecting the oak trees, our native trees out here. You know, let's make sure that if we replace trees, we replace them with the right kind of trees that are good for this climate. You know, you see all the pine trees in Reading right now, and you're just thinking, they almost look dead. They might be dead, because they're not the right trees for this area yet. You know, we planted a lot of pine trees. You know, so those oak trees are really, really important to save. They'll come into our critical decisions as we think forward on everything, development. And so I'd like to say, if we remove an oak tree, let's really think about replacing just more than just one, two, or three trees. Let's really think about what those oak trees do for our community. They're vital for us, and it's something that we really need to pay attention to. They're vital for us and it's something that we really need to pay attention to.
Well, in Redding, we had a tree ordinance, we have a tree ordinance. It's 20 years old, but in Redding, we had a committee of 18. David Ledger, we had 18 on that committee? I think it was 18 on that committee that came up with some rules. Look, I met with the person that's in charge of the tree program in Chico. They charge builders based on the size of the tree. You either pay that fee or you plant another tree somewhere else. And that's working. They have six figures in the bank that that money that they use, that they collect from the, the tree ordinance to hire college kids in the summertime to water the trees that don't have irrigation. That's why Chico's got such nice trees, because they're, they're using the money that they're getting from their mitigation fees to foster that program. Here in Redding, you know, we, on that tree committee, we had realtors on there, we had builders on there, we had concerned citizens like David Ledger and some of you, I'm sure. And they met quite regularly until they came up and hammered out an ordinance, which I haven't seen it, I've seen the draft. For some reason, I haven't seen the official one just yet. So I know that I consider it. In fact, David Ledger, in the four years that I've been on the council, has reached out to me many times. And I've always supported whatever he's asked for. We need our trees. It cools the environment. And yesterday, when I was out walking the Panorama Park area where it was 100 degrees, handing out my little flyers, every chance I got to stop in the shade of a tree, I stopped. It was just too hot out there. So given that, we need to get behind that. We need to work with the builders and say, look, we don't have to pay the money for taking that tree out, plant another one. That's all we want.
Yes, so as far as a tree ordinance, as, as council member Mazzano said, we do have one, we do have one that's in process. I did talk to Jeremy Pagan, our, our Development Services Director this afternoon. He said that actually he thinks it'll come before council sometime in December. So this winter, we'll be able to see it or late fall. I think it's absolutely imperative we have a tree ordinance. Otherwise, we have a concrete jungle and we don't want that in our city. We, we have a great city for trees. We need the tree canopy for a number of reasons, but I really think there's also a common sense way in which we can continue to have great trees and good housing and smart developments that are conscientious about all these things together, working together. I don't think one has to be at odds with the other. So I'd love to see the, the new tree ordinance have that. I think that it's moving in that direction where, where we will be able to have the proper mitigation and also, you know, be able to have developments that can exist by planting new trees. We, you know, as a builder, I had to, I had to have a tree preservation plan. And I also have to plant new trees on every single lot and every single house. I'd love to see more than just great murals planted everywhere, you know, it's, some of you guys have botnets in here, I know what I'm saying. So anyway, that, I think I would love for that, that plan to also involve something that's like this, these are the trees that work really well in our climate and really inspire that kind of thing so we can kind of have a, a tree identity.
All right. For question three, we'll start with Mr. Danuka. The city is proposing adding a 12-foot wide paved and lighted trail in the Jenny Creek open space. Do you support or oppose this project? Uh, one minute.
I don't know the reason why anyone would oppose it or support, frankly. I can see, just guessing that there may be some opposition from the neighbors if they're concerned about privacy or something. Is that the reason? If that's the reason, I'm sure there are ways to mitigate that. Frankly, I should be walking on those river trails more than I do, just because of lack of time I don't, but every time I go there, it rejuvenates me. So I'm all for the trail where we can walk. The family, we need to make sure they're safe. And we need to make sure that we address the concerns of the immediate neighbors and mitigate that, but I'm all in support of the trails, especially the river side trails.
Currently, I would say no, not in support of the trail because I don't quite understand why the, that northern part is being proposed. I'm still kind of new to the Jenny Creek stuff that's going on. But from what I understand, it seems like there's already the southern part that was all good to go and then the northern part was kind of as an asterisk. And given the sort of feedback from a lot of the residents in that area who are opposing it, I would kind of have to side with them. Also, because when I heard that they were adding lights and things like that, it's going to be a lighted trail, that definitely disrupts wildlife that isn't great for them. And then also, you know, there are trails nearby already, so I would even want to see what's nearby to understand why the trail was even being proposed. But currently, as I understand it now, I would side with the residents who are opposing.
I love this, I love the Sacramento River Trail. I was there yesterday. You felt, scuffed in my hand a little bit, but I know every mile marker, I know that whole loop, I know all the trails around there. And I talked to people about the Jenny Creek Trail and there's really no community support for it. And people have told me about that. And I just looked at the analogy with myself, just thinking, if I have my own house on the cul-de-sac and the city said they're going to build a trail that between our two houses that's going to attract more homeless, you know, it's going to be now well lit, it's going to attract a lot more people parking, you know, in the place that I bought my home, you know, maybe 10, 20, 30 years ago, you know, that's a problem. And I think the, the real root of the issue is we don't need that trail necessarily. We have paths to get up the road where the stairs are. I know the Sacramento River Trail, you know, as you go further towards the dam itself, there's plenty of opportunities to find connections and we may not really need it. But what we have to do, which is really, really important, listen to people, ask the questions. And I think that's the issue that I hear is the people that live in the neighborhood just don't feel really listened to, they don't feel valued, they don't feel heard. And I think we need to get a lot more feedback, but at this point, I got plenty of options on that trail. And I know, I know all the grounds out there and I'm really happy with what we got.
I absolutely do not support putting a trail there. I went out there and met with some of the homeowners. That's a trail that's going to run from 299 down to the Sacramento River. All you really have to do right now is walk down the street and at the end of the street, there's a trail that takes down the river. We don't need to go into that canyon. There's houses on this side, there's houses on this side, there's a canyon with a stream that actually has salmon in it. And you want to put a trail up there behind those homes and then put lights on it? No, we don't need that there. And I'll tell you how this is going to work, folks. You all need to show up at the council meeting, that's on the agenda. I work this job full-time because I'm retired. And when they were going after Aaron Hatch a couple of weeks or months ago, I rode out there and got 125 people to come back to me and say, no, we gotta keep Aaron, we gotta keep him. I wrote back to all 125, not a canned email, a personal email, and invited them to come to the council meeting. And as I started calling their names, I looked at my stack of emails, oh, I invited that woman, I invited that guy, the canyon. And lo and behold, it went from one of the council members who we decided was divisive and toxic to I'm going to renew my objection and we're going to support.
Yeah, so this is one of those issues that I would, you know, I always start with a new, when there's a new issue and something is contentious, I want to hear both sides. I see some people that live along Jenny Creek, some friends of mine. I would love to sit down and actually hear what are, what are some of the issues and concerns. I've read through the Friends of Jenny Creek page, I've seen it a couple of times. You know, so this is one of those things where it's, you know, this is not a partisan issue, this is not an environmental issue, this is a community issue. This is something that matters to, to certain residents. And so I want to listen to those concerns like the other candidates have said. So I would say I don't actually have a position right now because I'm in that early stage of getting the information. I'm in a number of other contentious issues that I'm trying to understand. And so I would love to, to hear more about this one. I had to stand up, my legs are getting cramped. So let's be honest, no one wants a trail running behind their house, but no one, no one wants it, especially a lighted trail. It's one of those situations where when a trail is being put in, you have to go to the root cause. Why are we putting a trail right here? What is the reason why is it going here? And unless if the city has good data to be able to support that, yes, this will be used by a thousand people a day or whatever the number is to show that there really truly is a draw, I don't see a reason why we need to bother neighbors who have been quietly enjoying their peace and quiet in that little canyon that has been basically green space, even though it was the city's land and can change. I don't see why we need to interrupt that unless if there is this massive demand for that project to be there. That being said, on top of that, I don't know why it needs to be lit. There's no reason why that, that project would need to be a lit pathway. I know that there are some concerns about safety walking out on the trails at night. But choose a different trail if that's the case, or don't take this one if you feel unsafe. There is a certain self-protection matter when it comes to choosing what trails you walk on. So anyways, as it sits, I do not support it.
Thank you. In response to our first question today, many of you referenced extreme heat. And so let's dive into that a little bit more. So just this year alone, or so far, Redding experienced nearly 70 triple-digit days, including a record high of 119 degrees. So what are some actions that the City of Redding should take to prepare for and adapt to our increasingly hot summers? So let's get some real examples for our audience today. Let's start with Mr. Hill. One minute, please. Sorry, my time got adjusted.
Like I mentioned before, getting a dedicated program for cooling centers and dedicated places so that people know where to go. And it's not just for people who are unhoused, the people who, you know, they have to choose between running the AC and getting groceries that week. Just being able to have these places in place so people can actually cool off and survive these 115-degree-plus days. But then more, more towards, so another one would be sort of really trying to incentivize certain programs, like the house I live in now that I'm renting, that's single pane windows. It's not great. So being able to sort of have programs to subsidize updated windows to double pane or insulation, or just giving a rebate to homeowners who improve their houses, improve the efficiency, just things like that to really get people aware that it's going to be hot and it's going to take energy to cool off. So, thank you.
San Francisco on Friday was 82 degrees. It was hot. One of the hottest days in San Francisco I can remember in a long time. But I found as I was walking through the city that the thing that felt the most comfortable walking around was every time was under shade. And San Francisco has a lot of trees, you know, on the sidewalks, on the streets, and I just kept finding trees every time under shade. I just found myself in jeans and a t-shirt, just roasting. That was a great way to cool down, but we just, we need more trees. We need more trees in Redding. Not everybody has air conditioning, not everybody has the way to be able to cool off. And our very first house we bought, it was a modernized house that had a whole house fan, it had ceiling fans, it had things that really helped cool down the house when it was really expensive to use an air conditioner. We, we think about development and building, we've got to think about the ways, how do we build to help cool things down when it gets really hot? Because not everybody has an air conditioner, but those whole house fans, the ceiling fans, the trees, resources to go swimming, get in the water, really cool us down. But going back to the heat, it's just going to continue to get warm. And unfortunately, we have to remember to do our part, you know? Just do it all apart and help reduce the heat that's going to keep happening over time.
Well, I can tell you that I went to the garlic festival down in the central California and we were like a herd going from one cooling tent to the next. And we'd hang out there, cool off, it was over 100. And then we'd go to the next one, and then with the next one. And I had to go through three of those tents to get my garlic ice cream. It wasn't worth it. But here's, look, it's hot, we know that. What I'd like to see is for, for us to be able to work with our EU and come up with an incentive program to allow the businesses downtown, especially, put misting systems out there. A lot of restaurants have them. And if we can incentivize them to do that, that would assist us in enjoying our community from out there. When you go up on the other side of town, there's not a lot of businesses that you can walk to, you drive to those, all right? But if we incentivize some cooling to the businesses, that's great. And for those people that don't have ceiling fans, why can't we ask our EU to come up with an incentive plan for that? And help these people put ceiling fans in their houses, which means they probably use less electricity and that's what we need in the summertime.
Coming back, there we go. I think this is a great question, you know, as a, as a builder, you know, I live in a newer home because I built my home in the last few years. And so I'm, you know, benefited from the energy code that we live under in the state of California now, which has two-by-six walls and insulation and they call QII, so we have airtight buildings now. But I worry about the, the senior citizens that live in the garden tract, they have a very, you know, it's, it's nice that they've got a, a building that can breathe, so they don't have to bring, you know, they're not going to have mold problems necessarily, but they have, you know, two-by-four construction and less insulation. And I want to see us, you know, advertise better our, our rebate programs for mini splits, for instance, that are higher efficiency. I want to see us maybe provide incentives for better insulation on some of these homes that are not resilient. But to the cooling center thing, we, we do have cooling centers. I think we're going to every single new park facility that we're building as indoor, we are making resiliency centers out of them. So Panorama is going to be another resiliency center, the library is a cooling center now, City Hall is open as well. So we, we are going to continue moving that direction, the New Day Resource Center at the Mission as well.
So cooling centers and trees aside, we need to be focused on our carbon footprint. We are doing a lot better as a society, but we have a long ways to go. I don't know how much my other colleagues here are focused on energy independence and those sorts of things and trying to find the other ways that we can be able to create energy without having massive offsets of carbon. And planting trees is great, we do a carbon sink, cool, love that, trap some of that carbon. We've lost a lot of trees though, over the last few years. Estimates into the tens of millions, hundreds of millions of trees that we've lost in our area by all the fires that are around. I personally would love to see if we start rehabbing some of those locations out there, start trapping some of our local carbon and contributing to the solution and not the problem. Obviously, that's a huge community effort, it's incredibly expensive, young trees need a lot of care. And I think that as a community, we can come together and work together in order to create a better environment that is able to do more trapping of our carbon.
One of my favorite movies is Gods Must Be Crazy. If you guys have seen that, we have two options as human beings. Either we can adapt to our environment or we can try to change our environment to our desires. I prefer the first one. But in modern times, we have to find a balance. We can't go back to that, but we do have to find a balance. So the trees, the cooling centers, they're all good. But what I really would like to see and promote at the City Council level is can we come up with a more environment-friendly design? Smaller house, more open layouts, attics, maybe desert coolers, which can work very effectively in our dry climate. The other thing is about the energy independence, and it may be a little bit controversial, but let me throw it out there, how about domino? Thinking about small modular nuclear reactors, really reduce the carbon footprint. Those are the things which we need to look in on.
Right, thank you. So the Redding Riverfront Specific Plan Area includes Turtle Bay and other revered bird and wildlife habitat, attracting thousands of monthly visits by local residents and tourists. What is your stance on protecting these ecologically important and renowned natural areas from development pressures? And we'll start with Mr. Lata. And you'll have 90 seconds.
Well, the riverfront project, we're not even sure we're going to see that completely built in our lifetime. It's going to be a very expensive project. It's going to take a lot of development. The city doesn't have money to build it. It would require development to really come in and do that. But when I think about the riverfront project and all the opportunities out there, like the community values is the trails, the river, we have clean, clean water. But one thing that people don't really think about there is Redding itself has been on the list of the number five fly fishing and trout fishing places in the whole USA. They say that the industry itself can provide more economic growth for our area more than what the riverfront project can do itself for the city right now. And that's what people come to Redding for, is they love the Sacramento River, they love the clean water, you know, they, they come to fish. And that's an economic driver really to our city. And I think that's one thing that's just not talked about a lot, you know? That's one thing Redding is good for. We love the Sacramento River, we love the fishing and tourists will really come in here. But as far as the development, you know, there's a lot of skepticism. Are we really going to see that developed in our lifetime? That's a lot of money. The city doesn't have it. But if I could think, one thing that's really important is I do support the rodeo, I think they should have had a long-term lease, you know, a long time ago, it really should they should have had a long-term lease, you know, a long time ago, it really shouldn't be an issue that we're having to talk about today. The rodeo is our heritage, they've been here for 75 years. They're an economic driver to our city, they give us over $10 million. And when rodeo is happening, the hotels are full, the restaurants are busy, people are making money. And I think if we think about one thing in the riverfront, of at least focus on protecting rodeo, make sure they're here for the next 75 years, and then, you know, everything else can come after now. Definitely value the efficiency and the economic benefits that we get from that.
Well, let me tell you a little story. When I first got on the council, I was in Los Angeles on business, and my cell phone that the city gives me is blowing up, with people saying, "Don't sell the riverfront, you can't sell the riverfront, that belongs to the people." I called our city manager and I said, "What's going on?" He said, "Well, we have an unsolicited offer from the Cowan Foundation, Populace, K2 Development." So at that council meeting that night, the house was packed. Aaron Reznor was the mayor at the time, and I went up to him and I said, "I'm not going to closed session," because it was on closed session to talk about high-close doors. I said, "I don't have to go to that meeting." And then I turned around, I looked at Michael DeQuisto, and I said, "I'm not so sure they still don't hate people in this town, I don't want any part of that." And it went. I mean, we defeated it because Aaron Reznor brought up this idea of spending $1.25 million, and the only way to stop that sale, because the other council members wanted it, was for me to go with Aaron and then Michael DeQuisto, and we beat that three to two, to not sell a riverfront to a developmental company. And the only way they were going to be able to do it was to put affordable housing, income qualifying housing on the river. I'm not going to support that, period. I would like a nice sidewalk along the river with some benches where I can sit, relax, get a cup of coffee from the cafe there at Turtle Bay. That would be wonderful, and that's what people want to see. So to try and develop it, it's going to be done here shortly, another year, I think, for the plan, and then it's going to sit on a shelf, because he's right, we don't have the money. You're talking about several hundred million dollars to build something down there, and we just don't have it. I can't support that.
This is a great question. So the riverfront specific plan, this is a great testament to, one of the things that the city did not have to do, which was to do a specific plan which has its own specific EIR, which they're able to really look at a lot of the impacts. We have private property and public property in the specific plan. And the secret documents are going to reference what you as a community, which many of you have seen, some of you at the workshops, have said, what you really want to see down there, the nature, the trails, the preservation of our outdoors. And, you know, these are, those are the types of feedback that we needed so that the secret documents could be updated, and that's what we were able to do. We weren't required to do that in our general plan, we weren't required to update our general plan by statute, but we did. And I think that's a testament to us as a community saying, hey, we want to be forward, you know, we want to be environmentally forward. And so I would say, yeah, they're right, the document could sit on the shelf, the city was never going to be the developer. That's not actually what a specific plan's for, it's actually for zoning purposes so that if the Cuchas family or anyone else that owns on the private side wanted to do something, that they have the zoning and the ability to do so. So if they want to do something, they would be able to, but with what you have been able to input into that plan. So I think that's why it's valuable.
Got to be real careful with this microphone, I don't want to have to go chasing a cord down the end. So I think that it's real interesting that we're talking about this subject, and one person at this table went up in front of a public crowd and said, "I want to sell this office surplus land," this gentleman to my right. And he doesn't mention that anymore, and I think that that's a crime. You know, he talks about it a little bit, but he doesn't bring it up to a crowd like you guys because he knows that's very, very unpopular. That being said, I want to talk now about what I think. I participated in the planning meetings for the riverfront plan, and I think that those were really good. I heard from hundreds of different people all sitting at these small green tables, talking about what they want to see, what they want to hear, and where, what kinds of programs they want to have happen. Now, some of that was a pipe dream, they talk about a few of these things with these wild rapid park things, and it's like, okay, that's not something that Redding is going to do, but you know, it's kind of fun to put it in there and just see if someone likes it. But really what I heard overwhelmingly is, those areas that are currently natural need to stay natural. We need to keep our trail spaces, we need to keep these areas as natural space for our environment. That, again, that section right there is our natural park. We want to go down there and we want to see wildlife. We want to then have that as part of our community. It is important, it should stay there, and I would not vote for really much economic development on anything on the north end. On the south end, privately held property, unfortunately, they're going to be able to do what the zoning allows, and I'm getting cut off, and I can't finish that, but I want to talk to anyone that's interested in here.
So I attended quite a few of those meetings, and it's very clear, public, the most, the majority feels, keep the north side natural, develop something on the south side which is tasteful, keeps our tradition intact, but also allows for restaurants, arts, art galleries, or things like that on the south side. North side, nobody wants to see the affordable housing or any kind of housing friendly. So we need to respect the public opinion there. What I do find a little bit distressing is, I see it's almost like a lack of communication or lack of understanding between those who are making the decisions and the rest of us. And you saw that probably in Garden Track also, when they decided to raise the number of stories you can build. It's public feels that they're not being heard, and things are being done without transparency and a fair manner. What I do promise is, I will make sure that it's transparent, it's fair, and it's done to the public's desire. That's what I can promise.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Yes, I can. The Redding Riverfront Specific Plan area includes Turtle Bay and other revered bird and wildlife habitat, attracting thousands of monthly visits by local residents and tourists. What is your stance on protecting these ecologically important and renowned natural areas from development pressures?
So succinctly, I'm in favor of redeveloping what we already have developed and preserving our blue, green, brown spaces. Like I mentioned before, having worked in parks and rec, I know what it's like to have a green space in the middle of the city, just how great that is. And losing that would be not great, and it would be really hard to ever get that back once we lose it. So, you know, the rodeo is a big part of our local culture here, and just lots of things around that area. So like I said, redeveloping, modernizing what we already have developed, make it better and more efficient and all that, be great, but I really want to preserve those natural areas, both because they're pretty and they should be, but also a lot of draw comes from tourists, like some people have mentioned for fly fishing, people come here for the nature. It really makes us stand out as a city. So not only could it protect the environment, it also be, I think, an alternative to do.
Jen, is a bit of a follow-up. You can only say yes or no, just so everyone is clear. Do you support the sale of publicly owned land at Turtle Bay to private enterprises for private gaming? Again, yes or no? And we'll start with Mazano.
No.
Okay. So I'm going to ask one more question before we turn it over to our audience Q and A. So as a council member, what would you do to improve public transportation options and pedestrian infrastructure in our city? And I think, Johnson, you're up first this time. Yes. As a council member, what would you do to improve public transportation options and pedestrian infrastructure in our city?
Yeah, I think one of the big focuses and goals in the state of California is multimobility right now, and so that's why you're seeing, you know, I disagree with some of the statements said that, you know, because we don't see people biking at 110 degrees, that they won't bike throughout the rest of the year. We're actually, what we're doing is creating a bike loop in the city. This would be a great place to bike as we connect all these things. The Park Arena is actually one area where we're going to get that corridor updated, which will connect more bike trails to our River Trail system downtown and other parts of our city. I want to see more easy pedestrian, bike, and vehicle transportation, not just one-way mobility. And I think we're doing that. We're seeing that with RABA as well, getting innovative with, by going smaller, more mobile, getting kind of Uber-style vans and different things like that, trying to meet people where they're at. And I think that's what we need to keep doing throughout our city.
Yeah, the whole, the whole streets initiatives that have been going on are absolutely a godsend for communities. I understand that sometimes it limits the flow of traffic for cars, but that's kind of intentional. We're trying to make it safer for pedestrians, we're trying to make it safer for bicyclists to be out there along with the vehicles. And so we've been seeing those projects going in all around town. We do have a number of connectors now that can basically allow you to get from the Sundial Bridge all the way up now onto, back onto the River Trail, since we had a little diversion on one side. And those are very important projects, and I'd like to see those continue, expand, and increase across our city. As far as public transportation, I'm going to, I will parrot this, you know, going smaller on our buses actually is turning out to be a much better system. People really appreciate having the ability to have more flexibility where their vehicles are going and where their stops are. And I think that that's important, to listen to what our ridership is saying that's important to them. So again, more conversations within the community, finding out how these programs are benefiting, how they're not, and implementing them as best we can as a city council. That's our job.
Just to clarify, we talk more public transport, not bikes, you're right. Okay. In fact, I never understood that why do we have such large RABA buses and the ridership is so small? Why don't we have smaller buses and more frequent or different routes? So I'm all in support of smaller public transport, which will have actually less, less cost as well. But we also have to keep in mind that the city also serves people from a lot of other areas surrounding the rural counties. So we have to keep in mind that how we develop that has to be friendly with them. In fact, I would like to see a connector program with Sacramento Airport, for example, or with different counties surrounding us, which could be served by the public transport, maybe on demand, and that may reduce the number of cars which come to our city from outside. So we need to look at those innovative programs to see how do we reduce that need for them.
So I'd like to point out that I walk to. So something, some things are working, but like Mazano has pointed out, or rather, I walk to work when I can, but Mazano said, once 110 hours out of time at home, I'm going to drive that day. But just because you don't engage with pedestrian infrastructure all the time doesn't mean it's not worthwhile. And so I think the biggest thing the city should do, and some people might think this is putting a cart before the horse, but when we have the chance to like put in a bus stop and a bike rack, or put in a few more parking spaces, we should go for the more public-oriented and pedestrian-oriented options, because, you know, if that infrastructure is just never there, you can never use it. So putting it there in the first place allows people to get used to it, to use it, to walk to work. So I think that is what the city should do, that's the stance that the city should take.
I drove an electric vehicle here, I don't know if that helps, so. But I think in that jingle, like, what is it, Rock Ride, the bar puller bus, Clean Air is up to us, isn't that like a slogan here in Redding or something like that? But as a kid, I rode my bike everywhere, and, you know, times were just different. And I could be in the summer, I could leave at 10:00 in the morning and come home at four, my parents didn't always know where we're at, but we were riding bikes everywhere. It was safe in our area, ride bikes in many of the places, other places it wasn't. But how we can promote riding bikes more is, ultimately, we want to feel safe. We need more bike lanes, we need safer pathways, and that's going to really encourage people to be able to do it safely and to do it more frequently. As far as all the other options, you know, modernizing Redding, you know, think about the, the electric usage of not just cars, but how to be electrifying our buses, our school buses, how do we create more charging stations for not just cars and buses, but also the bikes, the bikes that people, I mean, need bikes, they do run out of battery sometimes, believe it or not, but those are really wanting to have, but we can really modernize our infrastructure out here and make these really, really safe.
Time's up.
He's yielding to me. That is a great question. Now, I have been on the Chastity Regional Transportation Authority Board for four years, and I have actually been the chair for three years. We manage millions of dollars that comes from your tax dollars, both federally and state, that focus on transportation in Chastity County and the city of Redding. So on that board, we have seven or eight of us on the board, and there was a meeting where we had our Public Works Director and the Director of Serta, and our new bus director, and I got all three of them in a room, and I said, "You guys cannot come out until you have figured out how to get the feds from downtown to the clinic." And they did. We have a bus route map that goes out there. But the cutaway buses that everybody's talking about, they're on a route, but we have a new app, brand-new app on your phone, that you can go to the app, order a bus to pick you up at your house. They will DDA off of the route, come to your house, pick you up, back on the road, and keep going. And that is amazing. And we're doing that with grant money, but it's always our tax dollars. It's coming from the feds, it's coming from the state, and we need to use that money wisely. The flashing lights, you see the crosswalks?
You have time to see it too, Mr. Mazano. Awesome. So that concludes the questions that were prepared by, by our sponsors. So I have some questions from the audience for you. First, do you oppose continued encroachment and development into our repairing areas along the Sacramento River? And let's see, I think it's, let's go with Hill first, mixing it up. I'll go in the order, but. Uh, one minute.
So last thing, I kill, this is really, like I said before about the site specific plan, and this generally applies to our watershed and the river. Our green areas, brown areas, blue areas really make Redding stand out, they make it a destination for people to come and enjoy nature. And so that is something we need to preserve and just preserve, both for people who want to come here, but also for locals who enjoy it, they moved here from that or they grew up with it and they want to see it for new generations to come. So doing things to preserve that and then modernizing our interfaces, like boat ramps and launches and things like that, making sure those are safe enough to date and aren't shedding anything or anything like that. So I am definitely in favor of preserving those areas, both for us, for people who want to come here, and for future generations.
Hopefully, the only thing we see in the riverfront is trails, you know, more trails in the future, and maybe that's all we're going to see in our lifetime. But it's really important to have setbacks, and I've done some reading online, and setbacks are really, really important. It preserves the beauty, the aesthetics of the river, helps avoid the pollution that can go into the river, but that's going to be one thing that's going to be really important in the developments, making sure we have the right setbacks and figuring those out, making sure we're not building too close to the river, and it's going to be a really important thing to do.
A simple answer, no, I don't support encroaching the areas, certainly one of the repairing areas. Look, Redding is growing, we can't stop that. The pandemic taught us one thing, all right? You don't have to go and pay $3,000 a month to live in a shoebox in the Bay Area, you can work from home. And who doesn't want to come to Redding and raise their children? I came here in 1999 when a crook I was chasing found out where I lived and threatened to blow up my house and kill my family. And I raised two children here with my wife. So, no, I won't support that, and I think that if you look at that and you look at the growth and the way the city is growing, we're 60 square miles right now, and we've got room to grow. We might not have enough water in some places, but we do have room to grow. And knowing that, we're also buying our night fire station line. We bought it, and as soon as we can turn the bottom arc around, we're going to have a little fire station. As soon as we can turn the bottom up around, we're gonna have a little fire station.
Test, test, there we go. One of the things that it really helps define what riparian is, is our floodplain. And one of the things, we just got a grant, City of Redding got a grant for updating our floodplain. Another thing that we're doing as a city proactively is to be able to identify our floodplain and tell our developers where they can and can't build and where those floodplains exist. I mean, it goes out to all the civil engineers then, and they've got, they get to update their map. And accordingly, we get to do that with our plan and kind of have that as an overlay for all projects. So that's what I support. I support us updating our floodplain so we know where we should and shouldn't build. But to answer, since the riverfront specific plan, to answer Mr. Backus, when I said I was for the surplus land going through that process, because the McConnell Foundation was involved. And no housing would ever be built where the Civic and the rodeo were gonna be. They wanted to build better arena there for our event center. And the McConnell Foundation has built the Sundial Bridge, Botanical Gardens, the Arbor Day, and the Turtle Bay, and Lima Ranch, all very by-rundway-friendly things to do in our community.
Our riparian boundaries absolutely need to be respected. When I think about land use and I start thinking about how we manage our land, especially in natural areas, I really like to look back on how the things were done thousands of years ago and the people that were on those lands, how they took care of them, and they respected, especially the waterways. The waterways were the lifeblood. That's, that was how communities sustained themselves. And I still think that that's true today, even if we're talking about enjoying nature out there and not necessarily fishing every day or whatever and doing those things. We still need to treat it as though we are, because that is, that is our lifeblood. That is what brings us all life. We draw our water. From there, we have our lives associated with this river and all of our waterways, not certainly just the Sacramento River, but every tributaries that go into it. I would like to see us keep those for as long as we possibly can and respect them just like they did in the past.
Ooh, it's getting hot on my right side here. So absolutely, we need to protect our water. But it's not just for the beauty and the nature, but it's also for two more reasons. One is the risk of flood, but there's a third reason which I want to share with you. As a specialist in pancreatic cancer and liver cancer, I see a ton of pancreatic cancer, Gastroenteric cancers, bile duct cancers here, GI cancers here, which I have a suspicion, although it's not proven, but I see much higher incidence here. I see much younger population having that here. And I have a suspicion it has something to do with the contamination of our water and soil from past industries. I absolutely want to make sure that our water is protected for next generation, my children, my grandchildren, and the rest of the people.
So we have several comments, or comments and questions related to the tree ordinance and just lifting up the benefits of trees. So folks, can you, if, can each of you speak a little bit more to, one, how you would make a new tree ordinance effective? And this comment is really striking to me. So as a council member, how would you bring back pride, tree pride to our city? So maybe can you just speak a little bit more to the tree ordinance? And we'll start with, please, we'll start with you. Backus, sorry, I called you, totally messed up your name.
I assure you, you're not the first person nor the last person that will mispronounce my name. The E screws everyone up, just forget it's there.
And one minute.
Oh, one minute, there we go. So again, we're talking about the tree ordinance, we're talking about how, you know, the how is wise and if. Again, I have a plan that I researched early, but it's way more than a minute to talk about the details and specifics. So anyone that has that question, please come up to me afterwards, I'm happy to talk about it. How we can bring back tree pride, though, you know, I remember as a kid, every single Arbor Day, my family would go plant a tree, and we made it a family outing, and it was a big deal. And I know that we do have some folks up here that celebrate that, but I would really like to bring that back as maybe going through our service clubs, which I'm a member of several, go to them and say, "Hey, can you guys write a grant and provide us some seedlings or, you know, maybe some younger trees that maybe has a chance of survival?" And take those out in the community and replant them in the areas, especially, again, talking about restoration of the areas that are devastated. I would love to see a program like that come up, and I would be in support of it. I'd be on the ground, working with everyone who wants to do it.
I'm absolutely in favor of increasing our tree canopy. I need the input from the experts who have worked on this for a long time and have looked at it much deeper than I have, how to do it. And as I mentioned earlier, one of the things which I do very well is bringing different sites to the table and making them see each other's side. That's how I learn.
So for the tree ordinance, it just can't be a model, as some people have mentioned out. There are different types of trees, so at different stages of growth, different species and all that. So you can't just have, you know, just one, this is the size, it's done. So incorporating people, not just from the city, but local businesses who maintain the trees for private properties and things like that. Getting their input on what would be beneficial and using their expertise to really craft something for our area. And as for tree pride, I mean, Arbor Day is a really good example. Really just having the city celebrate trees, because if we want to be known as a city with trees, we need to really put that forward, perhaps with our tourism, in our schools, especially when the children are younger. You know, have them go through gardens around Turtle Bay and things like that. Just really get them to know why trees are important for our area.
I'd like, ready to see it take a better stance on protecting our oak trees and build that into our ordinance. Those oak trees are really, really important. Again, it's making sure that as we protect trees, we have the right trees here. And building that in our ordinance, thinking about when trees have to be planted, to offset trees that are removed. We think about, again, building that into our ordinance to, not to suggest what trees have to be planted, but making that more of a requirement so that maybe get more focused in Redding on recognizing trees. And we have to have a better tree canopy. We've lost so many trees from the car fire, you know, just walking the Sacramento River Trail all the time, just looking at all the burn scar and how many trees we've lost that still haven't been replaced. I just love the fact that this organization that sponsored us today has done a really good job in the past of trying to plant more trees. And that just, that's really neat. And I hope we can do more of that and just give more organizations beyond the ordinance that we can think of, just give more communities, because there's a lot of more trees that just need to be really planted in the future. That's something we did as a kid. We had a lake called Lake Cunningham. As a community, we went out and we all planted trees, and they're still here today when we drive by. And it's just such an amazing thing to think about as a kid.
Another good question, we've talked about it. We have 18 people on that tree ordinance committee. They worked for months on it. We're just waiting for them to bring it forward and so we can look at it. So, but tree pride, that's a great subject. I don't think you have to wait for Arbor Day. I think we should do it four times a year, and we should put it out there and incentivize it, get different communities to come together and plant some trees. And if you saw the news lately, Sierra City, because that new facility up there in Siskiyou County, where they're growing trees to replace in the fire areas. I think we could put the twist on Red Emerson and say, "Hey, could you give us some of those trees for our city, for Redding?" I mean, he's got hundreds of thousands of them. Maybe he could give us a couple thousand, and we could do that. We could plant more trees and do it at a minimal cost and get the people involved. You could also name the trees. We do that with streets. Why not put a name on that tree? And recognize that person for doing it. We make certificates of the city all the time for all kinds of stuff. You plant a tree, I'll come out, present you with a certificate, and we'll watch your tree grow. Thank you.
I think one of the things we can do, I want to do in our first 90 days, is actually update our design guidelines. The council approves design guidelines for, in our building code, planning code. And one of the things that we don't have is like a clear kind of design guideline around landscaping and trees. What I said earlier, that there are certain trees, we all know there are certain trees that actually work in our climate better than others. And I'm not sure that our local nurseries are carrying all of those. I have a landscape designer that gets his trees out down in the bay because they're better. And so I would like to see us have like a landscape plan that the city approves, kind of like our ADUs, where we offer free ADU plans. What about a landscape plan or landscape design? We have a lot of small developers that don't have time to research all these things, and also people building new homes. What about a landscape plan that says, "Hey, these are the trees that will work. This is the way you can plant them. This is what works in this area." That would be a really great, put that into our design guidelines. And then do that at a city fair, which is coming up October 12th. The city fair, we could probably add something like that.
Okay, I'm gonna ask one more audience question before we turn it to your one-minute closing statement. This question isn't exactly environmental-related, but I think it's an important question because it kind of speaks to some of the distress that the community has felt with our city council. So in the past, the city mayor was decided by a yearly rotation that changed to being a vote of council members, which can lead to political cronyism. Can you just quickly say which method do you prefer and why? And try to do it in 30 seconds. I know it's a big question. And we'll start with Mr. Danuka.
That was a really, really bad example, how to lose the trust of the people and set an example for the future fights. That should not have been done. I'm absolutely against that. And it doesn't matter who the candidate is, even if it's my worst enemy, I would still honor that. Whatever is the rule, you don't change it. You follow the tradition. I definitely do not change it in the middle of the game.
So I didn't quite understand the question.
So do you prefer that the city mayor is decided by a yearly rotation or by a vote of the council members, and why?
Oh, just rotation, because bureaucratically that's simpler?
If I win, don't make me the mayor in the first year, please. So like, definitely need a rotation. I respect that. I've been on many boards, and it gives a chance for people that really stepped into leadership to lead, giving them their opportunity, whether we like it or we don't like it. I just love the respect of the process and getting more voices and opinions. And I definitely would support doing the rotation. It's just definitely the right thing to do. So I will not be mayor in the first year.
Wow, she's talking about me. I was the vice mayor last year, and normally you rotate into the mayor's position. I'll tell you how it works at the city. Your first year on the council, when you get elected, you're councilman or a woman. Your second year, you become mayor pro temp. Your third year, you become vice mayor. And your fourth year, you become mayor. And the reason we do it that way is because you don't know how to run a damn meeting your first year. We have Robert's Rules of Order. We've got rules that we have to find, operate under. And you can watch our council meetings, and you can see where we struggle. That happened to me. A special interest group decided to pick somebody else to our mayor this year. And it's politics. I didn't get upset. My wife got upset.
Thank you, Mr. Pizano. Mr. Johnson.
Oh yeah, I was looking into this, and every time there's like a controversy like this, I ask myself like, what could we then make a policy to change it so it's more clear? So anytime, like in baseball, I play baseball, there's these unwritten rules. So people get mad if someone swings on a O3 pitch and hits a homerun. You're like, "Hey, that's not, that's not fair. You threw the pitch down the middle, you shouldn't have swung." And I go, "Well, let's write it in the rules." You know, let's, if it's something that is not supposed to be voted on by the other councilmen, and it's just gonna be a rotation, let's put that in our council policy. So I would, I would say that, let's remove the controversy.
So I believe that tradition matters on so many levels. I am in support of just, again, first-year councilperson, you know, mayor pro temp, vice mayor, mayor. I believe that is a fair process that everyone can see when they're walking into the role. There's no question about it, and it's not a popularity contest of who becomes mayor. It's earned over time.
All right, with that, we can go into our closing statement. So based off this order we've been going through, Hill, you'll start us off. One minute each, please.
All right, I'll keep this simple. Like I've mentioned before, I have a background in Parks and Rec and working in parks in our greenery in the area. And then also I have a background in geology and natural sciences. So if you're looking for an environmental candidate, someone who understands whatever is gonna be sent to them, I'm gonna be that person, and I want to work towards preserving the green spaces, blue spaces, brown spaces, riparian ways, whatever you want to call them, I will be that candidate. And I will work towards preserving this for the city. Thank you.
I've lived here for 30 years. I might be here the longest, more than other people. But I just love Redding, and I think Redding's got a bright future. I think Redding can be messy, and right now it feels a little bit messy, but you know, that's why we clean house sometimes. But for my children, my children are away at college, and I think about the opportunity of where my kids are gonna land. And I love Redding so much, and I hope this just becomes a community where my kids want to move back. And I hope my kids can find this to be a community where they have their own kids or grandkids. And I hope that we get to be together for family. And that's the best part about community is to see our friends and our family together in Redding. I led in Redding with many other boards. My business has been here for over 20 years. But I love to lead by just listening to people, listening to people on all sides, the left, the right, the north, the south, just everywhere. And then if we just listen to everybody, we can bring down the tone, you know, of what politics is right now, and really get a lot done just by listening. And I promise to do that for you if I'm elected. I'm just gonna listen to everybody, because I'm not the expert in everything. And I'm still learning some things too, you know, and so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me express my deepest gratitude for your unwavering support while I've been on the council for the last four years. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve alongside so many people that want this community to be better, and it really has been. But over the past four years, we've made some great strides. Our police department, our fire department are better equipped to do the job and provide the public safety that you all deserve. Our commitment to the homeless problem has shown up some results. We are making headways there, and I continue to work on that. And, but there's still more to do. There's many challenges that face us. And I think that for me, coming back on the two-year term, that's very, very specific for me, to do it for two years, to finish what we started. Your support has been the backbone of what I've been trying to do. I spend probably 40 to 50, sometimes 60 hours doing council business. We get $600 a month. After taxes, it's 400. It doesn't cover my gas bill. I don't do this for the money. I do it because I want our city to thrive. I want everyone to have that opportunity. So I thank you for your trust and your support, and obviously for your vote.
Thank you.
For more information, go to MarkPizano@.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. I, two years ago, I ran. You guys might have remembered me at this event two years ago, and I lost, and I had a choice. Do I want to go back hiding a hole, just do what I was doing before I got involved, or did I want to double down? And I decided to double down. I decided to get more involved, more involved with our parks projects, more involved with homelessness. I joined the board of the Good News Rescue Mission. I got more involved with different city projects, the police department, the Citizen Academy, joined, applied for planning commission, got that, then got appointed to city council. And I just wanted to be more involved. And I want you to know that you can reach out to me, and I will respond. People that email me or surprise to hear back from me or call, hear a call from me, I want to hear from you. I want to listen. I want to hear your concerns. I want to talk about it. Just know that I, when I listen, I ask good questions. I try and pull out more information so that I can understand it at my level, because I'm not as smart as a lot of you in the topics that you guys are experts in. So please support me, joshforredding.com, and I appreciate your vote for the four-year term.
Mark stole a little bit of my thunder in how I was gonna present this, because I was gonna start with $600 a month. That is not a reason to run for office. I view this as a continuation of my service worth. Again, I have worked with so many nonprofits in this town, helping to solve the problems that we're facing in our community head-on. I doubled down before I started to run, and I did so in the background. I wasn't trying to make this about myself. And, you know, honestly, being up here and being in front of you all, I still feel weird about it. And, you know, honestly, being up here and being in front of you all, I still feel weird about it, because it's not about me, this is about you, it's about the community, and it's about making us a better place to live. And I will continue to do this hard work that I've been doing over the last several years in these clubs and these organizations that are fighting hard to make our community better, and I will do that for you as your city councilperson for the next four years. And I hope I can get your vote, please go to backdave.com, and you can learn a lot more information and reach out to me, and I do respond to emails. Thank you.
Thanks. We want a good environment, and history has taught us to do that, we need a healthy and happy people. We are hurting right now. The reason I'm running is, amongst many other things, mental health, our medical health, shortage of medical doctors, nurses, all kinds of healthcare workers. High cost of living, all of these things need solutions. We need to have a clear vision and a pragmatic plan. I don't have all the answers, you know, I, even today, I didn't have the answers about trees and all that. But I'm very good at finding it, putting the people together, and working for the best of my patients. My patients and families have given me the privilege that they have trusted me, I'm asking for your trust that I will do the best possible humanly to heal our city, make it survive and thrive. So I only ask for your votes, and my website is drpaulmunkin.com, thank you.
Well, with that, that concludes our, um, forum tonight. I just wanna quickly, and, um, well, first, let's give him a round of applause for the way you all have been a part of this. You all did great, um, and you've been working with, something on my, 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 my. Um, but before everyone goes, I just really wanna thank all of our cosponsors for helping us put this event together. I wanna thank every one of you who came up, it's so cool to see how many people are in this room and care about the environment and wanna make Redding a better place. I'm feeling so inspired personally, looking at all of you. And I also wanted to just quickly acknowledge some folks we have in the house. So Gary Cad and Francie Sullivan, our former, uh, council members, and Planning Commission Chair, Aaron Hatch. So it's just great to have those folks in the room with us as well. Uh, but yeah, with that, thanks again, um, and I think we can all, all go home now, thank you.